Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings held February 14th and February 24th?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. We have two people wishing to address the board tonight. Statement here. Computer's a little slow. The board sets aside a portion of each meeting agenda to hear from community members on items of general interest or concern, as well as regular agenda items. Comments are limited to five minutes. Since we only have two people, you each will get five minutes, and Kate will be your timer and let you know when you have a minute left and 30 seconds. Please wrap up your comments when you are notified of that. When you are called to the podium, please identify yourself and your address and the organization you represent for the record of the meeting. If you have any visual aids or handouts, please see a member of our communications team prior to the meeting. They will help you distribute information and prove any item to be shown for public viewing. The board does not take comments during this time on any personnel matters, and all meeting attendees are expected to treat others with respect and civility. The board will not respond to individual comments, and staff may be requested to follow up as needed following the meeting. Thank you for coming tonight, and we welcome Chad Bishop as our first speaker.
I forgot to remind her about the input. No worries. Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. In the spirit of defusing an artificial political and social tension, I'm once again asking you to consider acknowledging staff and students with COVID-19 recovered status in your policies as equivalent to that of the voluntarily vaccinated, to reimburse your employees and staff for SARS-CoV-2 antibody and adaptive T-cell response assays so they might learn of their immune status, that when the Sioux Falls School District informs parents of vaccination clinics, they should inform parents that they should consider screening their child for previous infection prior to vaccination or consider a previous PCR positive test as concordant. Given there's been no movement on these policies, requests since I began addressing them, I assume you as policymakers have been operating under the assumption that the recommendations made by our medical experts, both local and national, with respect to natural immunity as represented by the CDC, represent a scientific consensus. If so, I would respectfully request that you watch the following clip of an interview with Dr. Paul Offit published January 25th of this year. In this clip, he recounts the meeting where he was, quote, "asked along with three other people to advise the administration on whether or not natural infection should count as a vaccine," unquote. Per his recollection of this interview, those in attendance were himself as director of the Vaccine Education Center at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, representing the pediatric point of view, CDC Director Dr. Rochelle Vilinsky, then NIH Director Dr. Francis Collins, U.S. Surgeon General Dr. Vivek Murthy, and Dr. Anthony Fauci, Director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Disease. In this interview, Dr. Offit recalls, quote, "I mean, you have been vaccinated essentially, but here, and I think it was probably more bureaucratic than anything else, when you, it is not at all surprising that if you're naturally infected that you will develop high frequencies of memory B and T cells, which should protect you against serious illness. And I think that is what the CDC has now shown," unquote. Later, he says, quote, "But the four of us were asked to comment on did we think natural infection basically should count in situations where vaccine is mandated? And I was one of the two people that said yes. The other two people said no," unquote. Please note, Dr. Offit's bio states, "He's an internationally recognized expert in the field of virology and immunology." So, a broad scientific consensus is now a 50-50 split in a secret meeting which was never publicized. Why are you just hearing him this now? Tonight, I have an additional request, File-A-Foya request for the minutes of this meeting. Again quoting Dr. Offit from a different interview. "So sure, I think that if all parents decided to vaccinate those children, that would certainly contribute to herd immunity, but that's not an argument I would ever make for a parent, which is that you're vaccinating your child to protect others. You're vaccinating your child to protect your child." Given the data I have provided in the last several weeks, this begs the question. So what benefit is there to a child who has already recovered from COVID-19 to receive any of the vaccines on offer? In the Lancet Volume 22 issue published January 1st of this year, given the evidence of immunity from previous SARS-CoV-2 infection, however, policymakers should consider recovery from previous SARS-CoV-2 infection equal to immunity from vaccination for purposes related to entry to public events, businesses, and the workplace or travel requirements. They still saw fit to threaten people's jobs, though. Reuters citing the CDC's January 19th report, which states, "Importantly, infection-derived protection was greater after the highly transmissible Delta variant became predominant, coinciding with early declining of vaccine-induced immunity in many persons." The focus in this report visibly shows the risk to COVID-19 recovered being less than the voluntarily vaccinated and boosted. So five months after the Israeli government published the largest study to date stating the risk of the vaccine breakthrough Delta case was 13-fold higher than the risk of developing a second infection, it seems the CDC has finally concurred. My point, the benefit of vaccine to the COVID-19 recovered is negligible if not zero. In medical ethics, these negligible benefits must be compared to the risk to discern of treatment as ethical for the individual. From the same Lancet article, this tidbit. Some people who have recovered from COVID-19 might not benefit from a COVID-19 vaccination. In fact, one study found that previous COVID-19 was associated with increased adverse events following vaccination with a Comirnaty mRNA vaccine. That's the Pfizer-BioNTech. When it comes to children, what should we make of the Reuters report that Sweden decides against recommending COVID-19 vaccinations for ages 5 to 11? With the knowledge we have today with the low risk for serious disease for kids, we don't see any clear benefit with vaccinating them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
I'll send a link.
Okay. Our next speaker or topic is from Mayor Tanyan. Thank you for being here.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name's Paul Tanyan. I serve as the mayor of this fine city, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our residents and myself to simply say thank you to this body. I know that tomorrow is a filing deadline for people who want to be in your chairs, and then people aren't exactly lining up to do it right now. And that's, I think, in some ways for good reason. This has been a hard year. It's been a hard couple of years for you guys. And there is a quote that someone sent me that I'd love to reflect on. It's from LBJ. And he says, "When the burden of the office gets exceptionally heavy, I always remind myself, it could be worse. I could be a mayor." And I always think, it could be worse. I could be a school board member. And you have dealt with some very heavy and weighty topics this year, and I deal with a lot of residents in our community who have moved here or who have not moved here, but have been so appreciative for the fact that we've been able to continue with in-person learning and continue educating our students, doing it in a safe and pragmatic fashion, because it's simply not the norm around the country, what we've done here. And I think that has to be acknowledged. And so, on behalf of myself and the rest of the city, I'm just very appreciative of you guys taking time from your families, from your life, to be elected officials, because there's not many people who can relate to how hard the job has been. I can relate. The general public oftentimes maybe doesn't give you guys a fair shake, doesn't give me a fair shake at sometimes, but that comes with the chair. And so, what I have for you tonight, if I can approach the dais, is we do have these challenge coins that we give out from the city to people who exhibit the core values of the city. Our core values in the city of Sioux Falls are safety, teamwork, innovation, character, and respect. And I think you guys have embodied all those so well the last couple of years. So, on behalf of myself and the city, thank you guys for all you do for our city. And if, can I approach the dais and hand these out? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you very much.
I'll share mine.
Yeah.
Don't let him look at mine.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Onto the good news report. I think Carly's getting it tonight. Thank you, Carly.
Good evening. Pull this down a little bit. I am excited to talk with you briefly tonight about a project that has been in the works for about nine months now. Tomorrow, March 1st, the district will kick off a month-long, community-wide reading initiative called Everybody Reads. And this is actually a partnership between the Sioux Falls School District and the Siouxland Libraries. We know how important reading and literacy is, not only for our schools, but our community as a whole. So discussions to establish a community-wide reading initiative began back in the summer of 2021. And since then, a team of public librarians, school librarians, and along with IT and marketing professionals from both the district and Siouxland Libraries have really been working hard over these last months to really work out the details for this inaugural year of the Everybody Reads initiative. So with that said, when you came in tonight, you may have noticed a new piece of decoration out in our lobby. It's a paper tree that will be decorated with leaves each time someone finishes a book in March. We did decide on a tree theme for this first year. Each school and public library has their own paper tree in their school or their library. So on your screen, you're actually looking at some of the creativity that's taking place in our schools. This is the tree at John Harris Elementary, and this has been created with the help of the art teacher. A lot of the art teachers have gotten involved in this, which has been great. So each time a student finishes a book, they will decorate a leaf with their name and the title of the book, and they will place that on the tree. The community is being invited to go to their local library to place their leaves, or we would welcome them at IPC as well. Starting at the end of the day tomorrow on our Sioux Falls School District website, along with the Siouxland Libraries' website, there will be a live ticker. The librarians will update that at the public libraries and our school libraries. And so you'll see in real time how we're doing as a community, which is really great. Really, the goal of this initiative is to create a community of readers ages 0 to 100 and 100-plus, as Mayor Tanyan has reminded us that are in our community. We know that literacy is really just so important. It's the gateway in all areas of life, school subjects and very well beyond that. And when you have a community of readers, you have citizens that are engaged in empathy-building skills, critical thinking, and it really just opens doors to other worlds. So, we hope that you will join us in reading this month, and we would love to have you place your leaves right outside our tree here as well. With that, we also have one other piece of good news tonight. Districts across all of South Dakota formally celebrated School Board Appreciation Week last week. But since we didn't have a meeting scheduled last week, we chose to extend the celebration of our five board members to tonight. The state has once again sent the appreciation poster, which we have framed here, and we will hang up in the back after this meeting. We could absolutely read you a long list of your responsibilities and accomplishments, but since your work is all about doing what's right for our students, we thought they would be much better at conveying our sincere thanks. So I'm going to play a quick video.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Sioux Falls School District Board of Education. Our agenda tonight is an important one, so let's get right down to business. Is there a motion to approve this agenda? So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Our agenda has been approved. Our first order of business is to discuss the quality of members serving on the Sioux Falls School Board. Who would like to offer their thoughts?
Well, these people are average, everyday citizens who go above and beyond so that students in Sioux Falls can have the best opportunities to be successful. I believe they should be commended for their work.
I agree. They hold two meetings like this every month, plus a work session, plus they attend a variety of other meetings where they represent our schools and our community. They build partnerships and make sure we have the tools and technology we need to succeed. That takes time and effort, and it is not an easy job.
All the decisions they have to make are going to affect 24,000 students in the Sioux Falls School District. They have to approve on what we're learning and when we're learning it. They have to make sure taxpayer money is spent wisely, and right now they're paying a lot of attention to what's going on during the legislative session at peer.
Have you seen the two new schools they opened? Wow, I know it's tricky finding out which students go to which schools on top of all the other stuff that they do. I bet they answered hundreds and hundreds of phone calls, emails, attended meetings, and had all kinds of discussions while they were out and about in the community.
And all these people have grandkids or grandkids in their school. They want to do what's best for their own kids, but it's cool if they want to do what's best for us too.
And now COVID, this pandemic is a real challenge. They have to make decisions to keep students learning, teachers teaching, and everyone safe. The teachers custo- The teachers, custodians, child nutrition team, office staff, and others should really be commended. With schools and sessions, our parents can keep working at important jobs in healthcare, banking, the restaurant industry, and those needs never go away.
Wow, school board members really do have a tough job. I would like to make a motion to publicly thank Cynthia Mickelson, Kate Parker, Nan Baker, Carly Ryder, and Mark Moran for their work on behalf of us kids. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All second.
All in favor, please say thank you, school board members.
Thank you, school board members.
Very cute.
And Gillette and the students at Robert Frost for really knocking that out of the park. So happy school board week.
Thank you, Carly, for your work on the reading initiative and that. Really appreciate it. What a great citywide event to do that and reading is so, as we all do know, reading is so important. It's great to get everybody involved.
We're very excited. So stay tuned to next month to see how we did. So, thank you.
Wow, it's really hard to go after that. Those people are really good. Any new conflicts of interest presented? No. So we will move on to approval of the consent agenda, items 9A through H. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. Onto supplemental consent. Approving claims of Sanford Occupational Medicine. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. Onto the reports of the superintendent, the 2022 legislative update.
Thank you. We've gone through all the bills in the last two meetings, so I'll just give you an update on some of the key bills. We had seven total key bills this year that we've been following. We've supported four. And we've opposed three. The three bills that we've opposed have all died either in committee or on the floor. I think actually all in committee. So the bills that are still alive that are key are all bills that we supported. So I'll just go through those and then take any questions. House Bill 1302 is the bill regarding PRTFs or psychiatric residential treatment facilities and kind of expanding the same level of access to kids on IEPs as kids who are not on IEPs to that. That bill is out of the House. It's over to the Senate and it is scheduled for a hearing on March 2nd in Health and Human Services. That's where that bill is at. 1308 is the bill that allows bonuses for all staff currently in law. It's just for teaching staff. That bill passed out of the Senate today, so that bill will go to the governor. Senate Bill 59 is the governor's 6% for school districts and other community health providers and for state employees and all that good stuff. Anyway, that 6% is still in appropriations. Appropriation bills kind of have different rules about timelines, so we're kind of waiting on that. One bill that we didn't have as key but might have affected that bill is House Bill 1327. That's taking, lowering the sales tax by a half cent, back down to four cents. That bill was on the Senate and it died in committee, eight to one. So that bill, which we didn't have as key but might have affected, more likely than not, Senate Bill 59, that bill has died. Senate Bill 198 is the juvenile justice reform bill. That bill has passed out of the Senate. It's over in the House. It's going to be in House State Affairs. It's not scheduled yet. They did ask for a fiscal note on that bill. So it's, the fiscal note is $7.8 million. This is what they've estimated it would cost if there was no, the bill isn't effective right away, at least the reform part. So they would, if they didn't pass anything intervening, the fact, I guess, would be $7.8 million. Another bill that we didn't have as key but we were watching is the bill that would change, it says permissible, but it changes the school board elections to either coincide with the primary in June or the general election in November. That bill died today, 1690. We had it as amend because we said, let boards decide if they want to go to four-year terms so we can get uneven years, but it doesn't matter. It died in the Senate today. Anyway, those are the, those are the key bills we've been watching and kind of where they stand. I'd stand by for questions.
To, this week and next week, the regular?
Yep, next week's the last, I think it's Thursday. Next week's the last day, I think.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept, acknowledge, and all legislative positions for 2022 pending?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved. Now to policy. Brett or Carly?
Thank you. We have four policies up on a review revise. The Policy Review Committee is recommending minor revisions to three of those four policies. The first one, Policy AH, is our conflict of interest policy. And the only change there is to add the disclosure form, so it's all in one place. So a simple change there. Policy DKC, which deals with expense reimbursements, minor changes to that as well, including use of district-issued credit cards. So adding that throughout the policy. Policy GCS, no changes recommended to that one. And then finally, Policy IGR, which is just an update to the curriculum revision cycle to add, you know, one that's been done to the end of the revision cycle. So with that, I'd ask that you approve the review revision of these three policies and regulations, or four policies and regulations.
I'd make a motion to approve the policies.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to, say, approve the review and revise of the four Sioux Falls School District policies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. Anything else for the good board? Teacher of the Year got moved from tonight to March 14th, so we'll get to celebrate the five finalists and winner then. Nothing. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.